And I will follow you.
Okay, and so I will call the meeting of the Special Board Meeting to Order. Welcome everyone and take roll call. And I believe that Hatton, you indicated that the missing trustees are all present via Zoom. So all trustees are present for the meeting. So if we can stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, a fair, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item number three is to review, revise, and approve the agenda. Is there any requests from a trustee to make a revision to the agenda? Not seeing any hands go up on Zoom or in the room, then we'll move ahead for item number four, which is public comment on non-agenda items. And I just wanted to explain how it works. Public comment on non-agenda items is taken at both the beginning and end of board meetings. We are statutorily required to take it once, but at our board meetings, we take it twice in case someone can't get there at the beginning of the meeting. We ask that anyone wishing to make public comment on a non-agenda item, excuse me, to identify themselves, and if they represent an organization, identify that organization. Spell their first or last name if the spelling is unusual. Limit the comments to three minutes, and we will be monitoring the time. And Hatton will let you know when you have a minute left in your three minutes. And to maintain civility while making comment. And please do not address matters of student or employee privacy. And so procedures about how to be identified to make public comment. Hatton will explain them in a minute. I did want to notify everyone, we're not enabling the chat feature. And would ask everyone who wants to make public comment either on non-agenda items or on items that we'll be discussing later, make them orally as it has been very difficult to determine in prior meetings whether the comments being typed in were intended as public comment or aside conversations and not intended as public comment. So we'll take public comment orally as we have typically done in board meetings. So with that, is there any public comment on an on-board item? And I'll rely on Hatton if you can let me know.
Just to make sure those who would like to make public comment, we have two hands raised. If you need to raise your hand, you go to the bottom of your screen, click on the Participants icon. It will open up another window for you on the side. Scroll to the bottom of that window, and you should see a button that allows you to raise your hand. We'll be calling on commenters in the order they appear in the Participants window because that's the order they've raised their hands in as if you were lining up in a in-person board meeting. With that, the first comment is from Kelly McDonald. Go ahead and unmute yourself, state your name, and make your comment. Ms. McDonald, could you pause just one minute? We don't have the TV turned up quite loud enough for the trustees to hear you. Thank you. Okay, go right ahead. Oops, I apologize. We're still not quite there yet. Thank you for bearing with us. I apologize, Ms. McDonald. Oh, okay. Sorry, it's going to take us just a moment of troubleshooting for folks on the Zoom. Thanks for your patience. So thank you to all of our concerned citizens. Thank you for the 10-minute interlude. I know that Casey Blue is the best warm-up act in town. I appreciate you holding court there and helping us with tech support. Again, we'll still go in order. Ms. McDonald, go right ahead. Thanks for your patience.
Thank you. My name is Kelly McDonald, and my last name is M C D O N A L D. I want to acknowledge that we are in the traditional homes of the Salish people, and I want to show my respect and humility to all these peoples who are indigenous to this place we now call on Hannah. I have two children in this school district, one in third, sixth grade, one in fourth grade. I want to voice my concern again for the health and safety of teachers during this pandemic. All teachers requesting to teach remotely should be approved, and certainly having to wait seems unnecessary and unacceptable. I think remote-- Music canceled. I want music to be taught remotely. Have fifth-grade instruments go remote. I believe that Mr. Z can do this. He did a great job teaching remotely after the spring shutdown. He can find other ways. He can find new ways to keep teaching the kids. And parents can connect kids with their peers online to practice their instruments and keep them motivated for learning it. I support teachers for making their safe, healthy decisions to keep their families safe and healthy and themselves. And whatever teachers need to do to protect themselves, I support it. Thirty-four percent of Montana's who have died from COVID-19 are Native American. Native Americans make up only around 7% of the state's population. That's a vast increase of the number of Native Americans who've died from it. That means that Native American communities have already suffered trauma worse than the rest of us from this pandemic, from death in their communities. And I want to try and prevent that further from happening. I realize that schools are needed for many reasons. I feel that if we all state our reasons for wanting schools to open, maybe we can find other ways that we can meet those goals and still keep people safe. Thank you.
Thank you, Hatton. Would you identify the next person who has their hand up?
Yes, and before I do that, could we just try turning on the microphone at the front so we get better audio for our MCAT listeners? Oh, they won't turn on.
I got one more.
Mike, please. So we're just going to keep that on, and I'll speak to you, and then you'll have to acknowledge folks so they can hear you. The next person is Tracy.
Tracy Hardy, you're next. You can unmute.
Can you hear me?
Yes. If you just want--
Hi, I'm Tracy Hardy, and I teach at Genet Rankin Elementary. I wrote a letter to the school board, and I have a couple of concerns. I'm not going to reread the letter because everybody can read it. Hopefully, it's in the board pocket now. It wasn't. I don't know what happened with the original submissions, but I know it's on the link on the site. Hopefully, it's in the school board. But I had a couple of concerns, just to revoice. I did walk back to the meeting last week, and, you know, at this point, we're not going to know what the right decision is. I know there's a lot of contention. We're not going to know what the right decision is until we're in the thick of it. So I have seven children. There's some things to think about. I have seven children and a partner that works for MCPS. Between the nine of us in our family, there will be-- we'll be in three different school buildings. Conservatively estimating that our family could now be in contact with 500-plus people per week. And I just want people to think about that, 500 a week. And these times, who does that? Who's doing 500 contacts a week? So I just try not to think of that part and trust that things will be okay. I have huge concern about teachers' mental health right now. Teachers are stressed out. One of the things that's happening in our elementary schools is that teachers are-- all teachers across all the schools are losing their 45-minute lunch, being reduced down to 30 minutes. And we know that in teacher time, that's like 20 minutes after we answer questions, use the bathroom, collect the last papers, et cetera. Teachers are also, at the elementary level, getting their daily 30 or 45-minute time reduced to just twice per week instead of daily. And they'll have to take their students out to recess every day, for every recess. So while we love our students, teaching is hard. We need breaks. High school teachers, I know, are being asked to teach six out of six classes. Again, we're going to be stepping into this with very little prep and no break. So we're-- I'm worried about teachers' mental health and the burnout that's going to happen between the learning new things, the expectations, and the time crunch. Things are going to be rough. Another concern I want to point out or talk about is the Apex Learning. I think out of all the things that are happening, this is one of my biggest concerns, that the school districts-- and I understand some of the reasoning behind it, but we're paying public dollars to a privately-owned online school to provide education to our public school students. To me, this is a big deal and a precedent that's going to be set with our public money being spent on a private school for public education students. I think the ball's already rolling. I'm not really sure why people aren't more upset about this when we think about public school being a great equalizer, and now we're allowing a private entity to educate our kids with curriculum.
Ma'am, your three minutes has gone past by a minute or two. So if you could wrap it up with a final statement?
Okay. So I guess one of the things I'm asking the board to consider is slowing the process down. We'll have more time to prepare, get ready, and not be so stressed out. Thank you.
Thank you. And I don't know if all participants can see the one-minute sign going up, so I will remind you when your time is up and give you a moment to just briefly summarize so that we can keep to the three minutes to allow for as much public comment as people would like to make. So with that, Hatton? Thanks, and Hatton, if you'll call on the next person who would like to make public comment on a non-agenda item.
I'm just going to have to tell you because if I unmute-- Okay, it's going to happen. Got it. I came back today to meet with our special education department.
Ma'am, could you state your name? We didn't catch it.
Michelle Ellen.
Thank you.
Ellen, Anne. I'm a teacher at Big Sky High School. I'm a special ed teacher. I went back today to meet with my department. I've written letters to the board. I want to tell you what I observed today. Adults, teachers were in our building. They did not stop and screen themselves. I checked. There were very few adults who were in the building today who were written down that they had screened themselves like they're supposed to. Contractors were in our building, not wearing masks. After we complained to our administrator, and she texted the person who was in charge of the contractors, they continued to not wear masks, or they would hastily pull them up when they saw a teacher in the hallways. I witnessed one of our custodians wearing his mask up above his head as a headband. As you've seen just now, problems with technology are hard, even when we have the technology experts. When we have the on-the-chalk guys teaching us in synchronous learning with Zoom and in-person, the Zoom participants were unable to hear, weren't unable to follow along, and it wasn't until halfway through when they thought, maybe we should screen share with the guys who were actually presenting, but they wouldn't talk into microphones. If these are the experts, and it happens the expert, and they're having problems with technology, what do you expect us teachers to do? The epidemiology meeting, press conference that I watched at the urging of Rob Watson-- thank you, Dr. Watson, for that-- my takeaway from that was that we are not following the advice. We are not reducing contacts. We are not keeping social distancing. We are not promoting good hygiene. In fact, students will exponentially increase their contacts from five to 25 to 40. Thank you, Hatton. Two more things I want to say. I want to teach. I understand there are school board trustees who think that those of us who don't want to go back in a hybrid mode are lazy and just don't want to teach. I do want to teach. It's far harder to teach remotely than to teach in any other format. Remote teaching is hard. It's twice as hard. And my last question is, how many of us in a school building have to get sick before you guys call this as the bad decision it is and place us into remote learning? Thank you. I'm done.
Thank you, and I'm just waiting--
Beth Cole.
Beth Cole, if you could unmute yourself and go ahead with your public comment. And again, I'd encourage everyone to try to stick to three minutes in case there are other people who would like to make public comment on any non-agenda item.
Thank you. My name is Beth Cole, C O L E, and I teach at Hillgate High School. As we head back to school, I would just like to encourage the administrators and the board members to visit each of the grade-level schools, elementary, middle, and high school. And I'd like you to sit in on an entire class period at each level. So I know that my teacher colleagues would welcome you into the classroom. We would like you to see firsthand what we're doing. It will be 2 hours and 15 minutes at the high school level. More than happy to have you, but I think you would benefit-- all of you would benefit from coming back with us and experiencing this and kind of getting an idea of what we're going to be facing every day. So thank you for my time.
Thank you. And I'll--
Tom McClintock.
And Tom McClintock, if you could unmute yourself and begin your public comment. And again, we're asking folks to limit to three minutes. Thanks.
Good evening, MCPS trustees and members of the Missoula community. My name is Tom McClintock, spelled M C C L I N T O C K. And as I mentioned when I spoke at the August 11th meeting, I am the spouse of an MCPS educator, in addition to being a lifelong Missoulian and MCPS N U M alum. As I did last Tuesday, I speak out once again in opposition to the proposed return to in-person instruction, no matter how limited, and advocate for returning in phase zero until we see an actual decline in cases, as was originally promised. Since that time, we have not seen a decline in our case numbers in either Montana as a whole or in Missoula County. We have, in fact, just passed 6,000 cases as of this morning, and our statewide death toll also continues its morbid rise. Yet, we have seen no action from this board nor from Superintendent Watson to reconsider the disastrous plan to reopen in Phase 1 and expose our teachers, our support staff, our children, and our families to this deadly virus. So I ask you once again, why are you choosing to gamble with the lives of our children and their teachers? Why are you so intent on pursuing this plan, which risks the lives of their parents and grandparents? Since that time, we've seen new studies from Massachusetts General Hospital showing that children can and do carry high levels of the virus and are as or even more infectious during asymptomatic and presymptomatic periods as adults. We have seen, too, that they are far from immune and are at risk of contracting multi-system inflammatory syndrome and even dying from the virus. Yet, despite hours of comment at the last board meeting condemning the plan, in addition to over 100 pages of written comments, only two trustees chose to vote to protect our community. I ask you, why do you pursue this ill-fated plan when it's clear that you've lost the support of the public, if indeed you had it to begin with? Since that time, in city after city when schools have reopened, PPE was insufficient, if it was available at all. Cleaning supplies were the same. Cases spiked, and schools shut back down to go back to remote instruction, leaving those schools and teachers to scramble worse than they did during the initial shutdowns at the end of the year. Yet, we learned today that a mere 700 reusable masks have been secured district-wide for children who have none, and that not all remote work requests can or will be accommodated with no indication of the rubric for evaluating those requests.
And Mr. McClintock?
Why have the N I G and resources of this--
Mr. McClintock?
--to ensure equitable and safe access to remote instruction for all of its students?
Mr. McClintock?
Such as it is--
We've extended another couple of minutes for your three minutes, so your time is up. And so I'll go ahead and call on the next person who'd like to make public comment.
I think you might have 20 seconds left.
Oh, okay. I guess there's about 20 seconds left if you want to finish and wrap up. Thanks.
Thank you. This plan, such as it is, inspires no comments. Neither, I must say, do I have comments in its author nor the trustees that voted for it. But you do have a chance to right the ship. Amend the plan, delay the start of the semester or start in Phase 0, and give teachers and families time to prepare properly. After all, who among you is willing to say that you're just fine with a child believing that they're responsible for the death of a family member or a beloved teacher and must bear that trauma forever? Indeed, which of you can say to those gathered here tonight that they're willing to sacrifice the life of a child for this terrible plan? Thank you.
Thank you. And the next person?
Yes, next is Erin Ensley.
Erin Ensley or Ensley, if you could unmute yourself and spell your first and last name, and then begin your three minutes of comment. Thanks.
Hi, I'm Erin Ensley. I'm speaking as an MCPS parent, music teacher, and spouse of a music teacher. I'm a high-risk individual, so my husband and I both applied to teach remotely and have not even received a reply, though my principal told me I am currently not accepted. I guess that means we are to report to school on Monday. My husband and I have both received our schedules, which include being classroom aides for entire grade levels at one time, lunch and recess duties, teaching a music lesson to each classroom in that grade level every day for a minimum of three weeks, preparing online lessons for the whole school, and it has even been considered that we could be pulled to serve for teachers who go home sick. In addition to the 100 close contacts we will receive between us at our schools, our children will be in preschool and a designated childcare option specifically for teachers' kids, creating a Petri dish in our home. This level of exposure is reckless and demoralizing. It is four times the amount of a classroom teacher, and it defeats the purpose of creating small cohorts when several specialists are traveling daily between multiple rooms. between multiple rooms. The process used to determine online academy staffing is also questionable. Some of my peers were accepted for secondary health concerns in their extended family in addition to childcare reasons, but they were prioritized over my first-person health condition to create an ideal balance of subjects in the online academy and avoid transferring teachers to different buildings. It is unjust that Dave Rot, who is not a medical professional, would be given the power to make medical, financial, and personal decisions for my family. On Monday, I personally heard an MCPS principal refer to specialists' role in this plan as "super-spreaders," followed by a laugh. I am not dispensable, and my family is not dispensable. Please pause, resume this discussion item as soon as possible, and pick up the pieces of this emotionally abusive and poorly organized plan so the community can look ahead for childcare needs because this is destined to fail. Thank you.
Thank you. And the next person who would like to make comments?
Tamara Reschke. Tamara Reschke.
Tamara Reschke, if I'm pronouncing your name correctly. If you could unmute yourself and spell your first and last name and begin your comments.
Sure. My name is Tamara, T-A-M-R-A, Reschke, R-E-S-C-H-K-E. Um, I am a fifth-grade teacher at Paxton Elementary School. I also participated in the ramp-up program where I had the opportunity to experience teaching with masks, practicing good hygiene, and as much social distancing as possible. I had a small class size that varied from a minimum of five up to a maximum of 10. It was challenging to make myself understood as well as to understand my students through the muffled masks, but we learned to be patient with each other and we made it work. We were able to maintain pretty good social distancing. I felt fairly comfortable in this small class size. I am slightly nervous but ready to move into teaching under the hybrid model where I have a slightly larger group of 12 to 15 students in my classroom. The challenges with masks will remain, but our social distancing will be more difficult. I'm speaking to the board in an effort to encourage you to move very slowly from phase one up to phase two. Under phase two, I will have 25 to 30 students in my classroom. Social distancing will be nearly impossible. Add to that, please... Add to that, please realize that elementary school, we will be removing our masks in the classroom to eat breakfast and lunch. We will become a very large, close-contact group. My concern came to light when I watched the Missoula County Public Health Department's data presentation. Um, I was drawn especially to part that talked about the importance of maintaining small contact group sizes. The Health Department expressed their pleasure with being able to conduct contact tracing with recommendations for testing and quarantine quickly and effectively due to Missoulians maintaining small contact groups. Um, their data showed that currently the mean number of contacts for a child aged 0 to 9 is 4.5, with a maximum number of contacts in that age group being 13. When school starts and we are in phase one, children within a classroom become a close-contact group of 15 or more, including adults. Um, under phase two, elementary school children will have a close-contact group of the entire classroom of 20 to 30, including teachers. Um, and these large groups go counter to the recommendation of the Missoula County Health Department. The current suggestion from the administration is described in a recent video by Dr. Watson, who's to move into phase two on October 5th. I'm speaking to you today to encourage the board to move slowly on that decision. Give us time to do a really good job on safety protocols under phase one, and give the data time to show a clear and obvious safe community before opening up our buildings to every student every day. Thank you.
Thank you, and...
Next is Deena Mansour.
Um, Deena Mansour, if you could unmute your microphone and spell your first and last name and bring, begin your comments. Thanks.
Um, Ms. Mansour seems to have possibly left the meeting. Uh, the next is Kim Scott.
Um, the next person whose hand is up is identified as...
She's trying to talk, and it's not allowed.
Yes. Yeah, this, my name is Kim Scott.
Okay.
S-C-O-T-T. I wanted to acknowledge at the, at the beginning of this that I'm not part of the Missoula community, but my daughter and her husband are both music teachers, and my grandson is in elementary school there. And I'm calling, just from the perspective, in my, in my personal life, um, I'm, uh, the CEO of the largest mental health provider in the state of Oregon, working with children and families in over 150 schools. And one thing that I do know a lot about is traumas, the impact of trauma, uh, including vicarious traumatization, meaning those that work with the kids in this environment and the trauma that they're exposed to, much, much less, uh, uh, the potential of exposure to this, um, virus. But if you look at education, children certainly can't learn in environments where there's trauma, and teachers certainly can't teach in environments where there's trauma. And what I would say to the school board is, I think that there's a huge abdication of responsibility and duty as it relates to ensuring a healthy ecosystem for kids and families that really are trying to learn. If, if you think this is a courageous decision, uh, I, I would really, um, want to confront that because I think a courageous decision would mean that you, as a school board, would connect better, listen better to your educators, your professionals, and come to a decision that's based on science professionalism and understanding. Um, without that, I think what you think is a courageous decision may very well be an arrogant decision. Um, so my, my demand as a grandparent and the parent of a teacher in your school is that you meet your obligation as a board and your fiduciary responsibility of care, duty, and loyalty with a primary responsibility of doing no harm. You're doing harm right now. You traumatize people. You have not given them the time to really prepare for this. I really find your plan suspect in terms of PPE, screening procedures. Um, you're clearly not there and ready to create an environment where, where learning can happen and certainly safety won't happen. And, um, I just want you, each one of you to consider on the board, uh, right now, you, you can change this, but the moment that you lose a teacher or a child, I want each one of you to think what that means.
Open the board. Curious.
Yep.
Next is Deena Mansour. We'll try her again.
Okay, um, Ms. Mansour, it looks like we found you, so if you can unmute your microphone and spell your first and last name and provide your comments on a non-agenda item.
Okay, hi, I'm Deena Mansour, D-E-E-N-A-M-A-N-S-O-U-R. Um, sorry if I missed you before. I'm in my office, and I heard that Mount Sentinel is in flames, and I also have something slightly off-topic, so a little something new. I'm the parent of a Hellgate 2019 graduate and a current Hellgate senior who is in the IV program. And so I'm commenting, um, to draw attention to the unnecessary removal of our longtime IV coordinator, um, which will result in significant impact, impacts on the IV kids at a time of what you know is already significant stress. Um, and I also want to draw your attention to the, to what is perceived by both students and parents as a lack of district support and investment in the Hellgate IV program. So, the first four years of the Hellgate IV program saw a lot of turnover. There were three coordinators in four years. We've now had five years of a spectacular IV coordinator, Christine Hiller Claridge. It takes three years to get up to speed in the IV program. She's invested that time. She knows the students. She knows the program. I was shocked to find out today that those responsibilities were removed from her and given to another teacher who did not want them either. This teacher was given remote privilege, which is great, and this teacher is a fantastic teacher at Hellgate, but to supplement her FTE, she was asked to also be the IV coordinator with no warning to the IV coordinator and no warning to those kids in the program. So, what I'm simply asking is that you correct this, this potential mistake that was made. Give the extra courses that were given to the IV coordinator to the teacher that was given the coordinator responsibilities. Put the coordinator responsibilities back with the person who has the expertise and who can support these kids at what is a really difficult time. Oops. Already their, um, already their IV program is kind of in tatters. Last year, they weren't able to test. This year, the test will be completely different. And what they need at Hellgate is a leader who understands the IV program. So if you rectify this, the kids will be supported and the teachers will be supported, and this needs to happen relatively quickly because the teacher is now getting up to speed on a class she's not taught. The IV coordinator is getting up to speed on something she cannot do in a year. This other original IV coordinator will have to continue doing her old tasks. Um, and then I just want to draw attention to the fact that the significant cohort of kids is not even allowed to have a core course that they have signed up for last year. This is a two-year math class. They signed up for year one last year. They aren't able to have year two this year because of low enrollment. That's not these kids' fault. This is something that Hellgate and the district should have known about last year, and even if it's low enrollment, this is still a commitment by Hellgate and the district in the IV program. So reassess it for the future, but please do the right thing and reinstate Christine Hiller Claridge as the IV coordinator and support these kids. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Jessica Cook.
Um, Jessica Cook, if you could unmute your microphone, and if you have an unusual spelling of your last name, spell it. If it's C-O-O-K, I think we're good.
Okay, thank you. Uh, my name is Jessica Cook, and I, it's C-O-O-K, and I'm an English teacher at Big Sky High School. Go Eagles! I would like to start by saying that I don't feel safe by any measure with the implementation of the coming plan, that I fear for my colleagues and for my students, and that I'm deeply disappointed that our health and safety are being considered an acceptable risk to moving forward. But I would like to focus my comment on the places where I believe I agree with the majority of the board. Schools are crucial for our children. There are places where our students can feel valued in the context of positive adult relationships, where they can learn to believe in themselves by developing new skills as they tackle challenging, engaging, and appropriate coursework, and where they can harness the power of social relationships to promote collaborative learning. And I'd like to thank the board over the last several years for working to ensure that our students have access to these experiences. But I'd also like to argue that these experiences do not magically happen because, sorry, they do not magically happen by virtue of students being inside of a physical building. They happen because teachers take the time to intentionally build safe and cooperative classroom communities. Teachers take the time to deliver the best content available, and teachers take the time to foster collaborative learning communities through an ever-varied selection of lessons and experiences. Teachers, supported by administrators and other staff, plan these experiences. They plan these experiences that deliver these benefits. To do so takes time, and that takes stability and predictable structure. To support this planning, I'm asking that you consider first not moving, or that you consider first, excuse me, moving back the start date of school from August 26th, as we are not prepared to functionally welcome our students back with a fully-developed and realized plan. If you'd like more confirmation of this, I would be happy to speak with you, but I think that you could ask any teacher in the district at this point. I would also ask that you consider committing to sticking with the current hybrid plan for the full semester. We need the ability to plan if we are going to provide the essential benefits of education to our students. If we do not have time to plan, students will not be getting the quality of education that is being used to justify the risks to our lives. Please support us moving forward by considering planning time an essential feature of our schools. Thank you.
Thank you.
And next is Carleen Hathaway.
Um, Carleen Hathaway, if you could unmute your microphone and provide your public comment. Thanks.
Tell her she's not, she's muted. Carleen, you're muted.
Are we okay now? Okay. I'm Carleen Hathaway, H-A-T-H-A-W-A-Y. I'm a paraeducator in, uh, the SLP program at CS Porter Middle School, and I'm also the MMCEO, Secretary Treasurer, which is the union that represents classified staff. Um, I mirror all the concerns that are being presented here today, as well as the email and letters that have already been sent to the board and the comments that were made at last week's board meeting. So I won't go into all that, but I have grave concerns about our return to school in person. Um, and as I said, I've already written to the board, but I do have something else that came up today or actually has been going on. I went back to school today, and as Dave and Sherry Postma can attest to, I receive dozens of emails every day from the paraeducators in MCPS with questions that they're posing to me to assist them in finding answers to. And I don't have all the answers, and I will compliment Dave Rot for answering every one of my texts, texts, and every one of my phone calls, um, and he's doing the best he can to assist me. But if we're going to be going back to school, and you're telling us that it's okay, and you have plans in place, and yet I'm still getting dozens of questions every day of what paraeducators are supposed to do, what their expectations are, what their schedules are going to look like, then we're not ready to go back either. You have an online academy at which paraeducators that have been approved to do the remote teaching as well have no clue about what it is they're going to be doing during that online process. No one's contacted them, and I did check in with Dave about that today, and, and he said he would look into it, but they don't know what they're doing. They're supposed to be back at work next week. So I sometimes feel that the classified staff is sort of being brushed aside. You have custodial staff who has been busting their butts since this all started. You've got essential workers like all of our groundskeepers, our secretaries, people that have been at work this entire time. Now you've got people coming back, and they have no idea what the plan is, what they're going to do, because we're kind of an afterthought. Um, I'd really appreciate it if we would rethink this plan of getting back to school in person right now and think of something else to do at this point in time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Marty Cardos.
Um, Marky Cargo, and I may not be pronouncing your name correctly, so if you could unmute your microphone and state your name and spell your last name and perhaps your first name if it has an unusual spelling. Thank you.
Yeah, my name is Marty Cardos. Um, first name, M-A-R-T-Y, last name, K-A-R-D-O-S. I have two kids at Rattlesnake Elementary. Um, I'm also a biologist. I have a, a PhD, and I have a, a, um, a background in disease ecology. And my opinion is that the, the plan that the superintendent stated earlier on in the year was responsible, and that said that schools would open for partial in-person learning if cases were consistently low or decreasing. That is not the case. Um, what we're doing right now in terms of opening the, opening the schools for in-person learning is inconsistent with that plan. And it's also obvious that the, from the public comments and those from teachers, that both the community and teachers are generally very uncomfortable with this plan. And I just want to point out that the inevitable outcome of what this plan is in com, in, in combination with university opening for in-school, um, instruction, is that we're putting an enormous number of people into close contact with one another. Thousands of people more than are in close contact with one another right now. The result of that is going to be that many, many, many more people are going to get sick and that some people are going to die. And I just want to point out, and this is not hyperbole, that the inevitable result is that people are going to die because of the decision you all have made, and I find it profoundly irresponsible. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Ty Williams.
Ty Williams, if you could unmute your microphone and spell your first name. I'm assuming your last name is spelled a typical way.
Hi, my name is Ty, T-H-A-I, Williams, W-I-L-L-I-A-M-S, and I am the parent of an eighth-grade student at Porter Middle School. My son has chosen to participate in the online academy because he has asthma and has experienced not being able to breathe in the past. Not only does my child have asthma, but he is also a three-times exceptional student. He's gifted. He has ADHD, and he has an... He's gifted, he has ADHD, and he has an executive functioning disorder. Because he's going to be participating in the online academy with Apex, I have concerns about how his accommodations and modifications are going to be carried out on an online platform. He was just very successful during remote learning, but that was only because we had access to Mrs. Lombardi, who did a phenomenal job as a case manager and working with him on a weekly basis on things like organization. We had Mr. Strauthman, who was very in tune with my son and was aware when he was leaving assignments out, when there were things that should be included, and he understood that a lot of that had to do with my son's working memory and issues with organization. It's only because he had that contact with teachers, teachers who were there in person and who knew him, that he was successful and that his individual needs were met. I've looked all over our website and tried to figure out how his needs are going to be met on the online model and haven't been able to do that, even as a special ed teacher. So one of the things that I ask is that you clarify how those accommodations would be met. In addition to that, as I've said before, I want to go ahead and continue to advocate for online flagship for those students who will be on the online academy, and that you offer additional electives other than just PE and general music. My son will have the opportunity to participate in things like coding and other electives because of our financial abilities, but all students won't have that opportunity. So I ask that you open up electives so that students can still be exposed to some of those other areas. In addition to that, I am a special ed teacher. I teach extended resource K-2 at Hawthorne. I've already been told by two of my parents that their children will not wear masks. At our district-wide special ed meeting the other day, we were told that we had to make a good faith effort to teach children how to wear masks. And as a special ed teacher, I fully understand that need. However, if those children are not able to wear masks, we've been told that they would be isolated and we are expected to continue to teach them. So I want you to understand that that puts me and every para in my class in a position where we will be working with children who will not be wearing masks. And even though they will be isolated, we will not. So I want you to consider those students who are not able to wear masks and how we can best serve those students while keeping our staff safe. Thanks a lot. I appreciate all you guys are doing and all the hard work.
Next is Marissa.
Next is a person identified as Marissa, so if you can unmute your microphone and state your first and last name. And again, I would encourage everyone to try to stay with the three-minute timeframe because we have a number of agenda items that we also are required to address tonight. So thank you all for your courtesy.
Good evening. My name is Marissa McLintock, M-A-R-I-S-S-A-M-C-C-L-I-N-T-O-C-K. As I mentioned when I spoke at the August 11th meeting, I am an educator at CS Porter. I'm a librarian, and as a specialist, I am extremely concerned for myself, my colleagues, and my students. As I said last Tuesday, I speak out once again in opposition of the proposed return to in-person instruction, no matter how limited. I will be seeing at least ninety children per day. That's not okay. I hear so much concern in these meetings, so much fear from the adults in our lives. How must our kids feel? I beg you to consider how these children feel. They don't get a voice. They don't have much in the way of choices. These aren't numbers to me. I keep hearing people say, oh, it's only point whatever percent. That's not a number, that's a child. A child who could potentially die if you continue to make this extremely reckless decision. I beg you, put off the start of school and start in phase zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have two initial hands raised. The next is Casey Baloo.
Casey Baloo, if you could unmute yourself and spell your first and last name for our minutes. Thank you.
I can, and hopefully my dogs are not too loud behind me. My name's Casey Baloo. I'm the president of the Missoula Education Association and a middle school teacher by trade. I'm going to make this short and sweet because, I mean, that's at the core of who I am. Ask anyone, right? We know at this point that you cannot respond to public comment, and we appreciate that. But we also know that this item that most of us have spoken to will be on future agendas, and that's part of the reason that we're here. You know, as staff members, both certified and classified, we're experts in education. You heard about the logistical aspects as well as the human aspects on the return to school. We are advocating for a slow, steady, sustainable approach to this return to school. We want to go back to school, but we also want to go back and stay healthy. I think that's the most important part. So as much as we talk about the gift of time, in this case, time is essential, you know, and that predictability that comes with it is absolutely what we're after. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Ezra Shearer.
Hi, Ezra, Mr. Shearer, go ahead.
Ezra Shearer, S-H-E-A-R-E-R. I just have a couple of things I'd like to point out. One, when we talk about fear in this environment, we as teachers have been carrying the weight of the freedom of this society for, I don't know, a generation now. How do I know this? Because this society votes to have AR-15s, and we have to carry the weight of huddling in our closets for four hours. We know what fear is. We're not afraid about sacrificing our lives for our students. We're afraid of killing our families and our students and our students' families. You need to realize that. This isn't about us. We carry your weight all the time so that you can have those guns in your possession. So we understand fear because we've been in closets while a student was so afraid they peed in a bucket as we're worried about somebody coming into our closet. So we can handle the fear. It's about our students, and it's about our families. So you need to understand that. And second, you voted for a plan with no details. Students don't know what classes are available to them via the remote-only option. Students don't know what classes they're going to be taking once they show up. Teachers haven't been trained on remote learning. They haven't been trained on two-hour and 25-minute blocks. They haven't been trained on health and hygiene protocols all summer long. You have done nothing as an administration to prepare us for this year. No PD on anything that's going to help us do our jobs better in full remote or in-person. And I don't even want to get started on the lip service you pay to Black Lives Matter when the district has provided no training whatsoever for anti-racist education. So let's own what we've done and own what we haven't. We have not prepared for the opening of school year. I don't know what's going to happen for freshmen for lunch. I don't know where students are going to show up to. I don't know where pairs are going to be. I don't know what hygiene procedures Rob's referring to, but I haven't seen any procedures whatsoever to use in my classrooms. I don't know any of these things, and I pay attention. What about the teachers who don't pay attention? I don't have any online materials to support my classroom. Apex is a great third-party private capitalist. Their goal is to destroy public education, but we're buying that. The goal here seems to be to get as many people as possible to sign up for full remote. I don't have PPE in my classroom. Many of us don't. Students aren't going to be provided PPE. The poor kids are going to have crappy masks, and rich kids are going to have N-95. Actually, the rich kids, they're probably just going to go full remote because they can. We don't have a plan. You have a theory on how to open, and until you ask for the details, how to board the trustees, you're putting everybody at risk because there's no details to this plan. We get one day in some of our buildings of teacher preparation. Zero PD whatsoever. And last year, I know we got the budget for PD. Why didn't you ask for the details of how much money is going to go towards training us this year? Ship sailed. Students show up in five days. No training whatsoever on how to do a remote hybrid option. No training whatsoever. Thanks. We're ready. But do you know what? We're always ready because that's what we do. We show up and we get the job done. And you guys rubber-stamp this admin. It's going to be great. And thank you, Grace, and thank you, Sharon. I appreciate you wanting to talk about the details of this plan in more detail, and I resent the fact that this board of trustees is not talking about the details of this plan. And don't tell me this plan is serving our most at-risk kids because it's not. They could have, two months ago, designed a plan to make sure on those three days, those at-risk kids aren't...
Mr. Shearer, we've gone over three minutes by a couple minutes. Thanks.
And Ms. Olson, Kim Olson.
Kim Olson, I believe you're next for public comment on any item that is not appearing on the agenda.
Okay, hi, can you hear me? Can you all hear me? Okay, great, because, so the first thing I would like to say is it was really hard for me to get on Zoom. I have done Zoom meetings, and I just didn't have a direct link. That information was not immediately on the last email that Rob had sent out as it was for the last board meeting. So I was practically calling friends while you were all meeting or giving your public comments, so I'm glad I finally got on. So I would like to thank you all for your hard work. But while I know you remain steadfast in your determination to start school on August 26th, as a seasoned MCPS teacher and parent, I'm asking the board to please delay the start of the school year for all students to September 8th, which is the start date for those students registered for the online academy. And also to please start all learning remotely until we have flattened the curve in our community and reduce transmission rates for a minimum of fourteen days. Take a deep breath, be brave, and push the pause button. Our buildings are not ready to open. I was shocked to hear that we had not increased our custodial staff. Simple things I'd never thought of before, like Paxton's floors are all carpeted. I don't know how we disinfected carpeted buildings, but I really feel for our custodial staff. We've got huge, huge responsibility, and there's only three of them. One is there during the day. We still have 400 kids that are going to rotate through that building every day. We need to be equitable about protecting everyone from the novel coronavirus, which is now the armed intruder that we have all feared will enter our building. Only this shooter is invisible, it's inevitable, and it can be in many places at once. Its bullets will be silenced, and they will shed no blood. Its victims will quietly disappear from our buildings, quarantined at home or hospitalized. Some will die. Because the hallmark of this highly infectious virus is asymptomatic transmission, each of us is an armed intruder unless we have been screened by laboratory testing. Not by self-checks, not by temperature readings, not by checks with parents who are in a rush to go off to work. Coronavirus will cause far more damage to our nation's public schools and our schools here in Missoula than all of the mass shootings combined in our nation's history. I see no reason to have a positive attitude about this reality. My concern is real, it's backed by science, and it should not be dismissed as an irrational fear or emotion. We've seen the devastation caused by the novel coronavirus across the globe. We've seen what works, what countries have successfully contained the virus, which have failed, and why. It is not my decision to return to in-person learning. As a single parent with a child to raise and mortgage to pay and in need of insurance and pound by the decisions of the school board and a superintendent bent on starting the school year irregardless of the real risks posed to our teaching faculty, our students, our classified staff, all of our families and the community at large, irregardless of the very real concerns we have been voicing, you know, those of us who are most affected. Dr. Watson is cognizant that under the proposed hybrid model, we still have confirmed cases of COVID-19 in our schools, and the school board voted to open our buildings knowing kids and staff members will be exposed to and transmit a highly infectious virus that, again, will hospitalize and potentially kill some of us. This is not what's best for our students or our community. Positive thinking will not protect us from this virus. We must prevent spread, not manage it. No one has ever been hospitalized for remote learning. No one's ever died because of remote learning. And lastly, learning remotely will not last forever. It's temporary. We've got to get the virus under control. Thank you.
Thank you.
The last hand raised is from Elvis Nuno.
Elvis Nuno? And if you could spell your name, your first and last name, and I apologize if I have mispronounced it.
Yes, that's correct, yeah. My name is Elvis Nuno, E-L-V-I-S, N as in Nancy, U as in under, N as in Nancy, O as in over. So I'd just like to speak out, you know, I don't have children at school. I was born and raised in Missoula. I went through our school system, and I've experienced what our school system is like. And I've come back to Missoula after a great number, many, number of years, and I just have to say what I see is a complete mess. When, I think, when anyone turns on the news, they see schools trying to reopen, and they immediately close back up because it's not the right move. Now, it's clear that every school needs to be agile and ready to pivot at any given moment. It's obvious that kids need to get back to some normalcy and have in-person learning, but they have to do it safely. There is absolutely no reason that an adult or a child should risk their life for their education. That's just, that's simply not worth it. And online education is hard, and certainly teachers are not necessarily trained for it. It's a hard thing to do, but teachers are passionate about what they do, and they do get the job done, and they care about their job enough that even when challenges are put in front of them, they will meet that task, and they'll get it done, and kids will be safe. There is absolutely no one that should lose their life just for the sake of going to a building to learn. We are, this is 2020. We have means of communication. We have to educate people, and we can do this, you know, at this time, in this place, until it's actually safe for people to go back to school. This, we will get COVID under control. Things will go back to normal, but right now is not the time and not the place. And this whole plan just honestly just looks like a complete mess with no planning. And if I had a child, I would have absolutely zero confidence in the board's choice to send kids back to school. So all I can really say is that, I mean, you people need to really reconsider this and be more prepared, put more planning in it before you actually put people's lives at risk. Thank you.
Thank you.
There are no other hands raised.
Okay, then we have come to the part, point of the agenda where we will, and I just want to indicate on our agenda under 4B, it indicates there is written correspondence within our packet. The trustees have all been sent a link that contains the additional public comments that were submitted versus email, and so we all have had a chance to go to that link and review the written comments that didn't make the packet. So just wanted everyone to know that. So we'll move on to 5A, which is announcements from superintendent. So Dr. Watson?
Thank you, trustee Holland. Chair Holland, I don't have any announcements this evening. Thank the public for the public comment tonight. I appreciate the time that they've put in and given public comment. Our next board meeting is September 8th and then September 22nd. Thank you.
Thanks. Now we move on to 6A1, new business, which is to adopt the 2020-2021 elementary budgets. And so there is background information that explains that we have, that the reason we're meeting on this date rather than our normal meeting next week is because by statute we have to meet on or before August 20th to adopt the final budgets for the district. Even though we're a unified district, we adopt the elementary and high school budget separately. So Pat, I will turn it over to you to provide background information on the budgets and the items that are found in our packet.
Thank you. So the first item is the elementary adoption, and as Chair Holland mentioned, we're here tonight to ask the board to adopt the budgets that are identified, including the levy amounts associated with those budgets. And the, I'm looking at the page number here. So page 42 is where you'll see the elementary motion, which includes the, which includes the budgeted amounts for each of our nine budgeted funds and along with the levy amount associated with those budgets. I'll have you jump ahead, if you would, to page 45. Page 45 is a summary, a recap of what the levy change looks like, as long, as well as the change in mills and estimated tax impact. On the elementary side, the total levies for the nine budgeted funds... On the elementary side, the, the total levies for the, the nine budgeted funds would go down by $234,000. It would result in a reduction in mills of 2.6 and a reduction in tax impact of $7 on a $200,000 home. As you look through those budgeted funds, the elementary general fund budget increased by 1.5 million under this plan. There was no voted levy. So this is the funding formula that, that supports that increase, and that funding formula is mostly affected by 166 student increase. And so that was the big impact to this budget. The percentage inflationary increase was 8.3% that was approved by the legislature in 2019. So then the, the other sort of interesting changes on those budgeted line items, the building reserve budget was reduced by 540,000. The transportation budget increased by 294,000. The increase and decrease is related to reappropriation of funds from, from last year. So we're able to set those budgets with some reappropriation of dollars, still preserving reserves at not a great level, but a decent level, about 8.9% on the transportation fund. And you can get up to 20%, so the 8.9% is about 400,000. The building reserve levy decreased by 107,000. This is part of that Senate Bill 307, and the major maintenance projects and major maintenance funds that are intended to be, or projects that are intended to be funded through the premise of levy also includes some state funding support. So a lot of that reduction reflects state funding support on the elementary side. I'll, I'll jump ahead then to, to the next page, 46, and you'll see a recap of the, of the mills. And on the left side of the graph, you'll see the, the mills for all of the budgeted funds we just looked at, other than the debt service fund. And the debt service fund is represented by its own graph and with its mills listed on the right side. And so you can see in the elementary, and you've seen this graph before, is that we were virtually debt-free in 2009 through 2016. And then in 2015, after we passed our bond, we, we issued a couple, a couple of bond issues in 16 and 17, and that's where those mills have come into play. The mills have dropped. It's certainly partly due to our chipping away at that, at that balance. The other mills for our other budgeted funds have, have varied here from 145 mills to about 160, which would very much track the change in budgets related primarily to our increase in enrollment and increase in our general fund budget. Then on page 40, 47, this is the, our general fund, our general fund budget in a real summary fashion, but also a specific fashion regarding our increases and decreases to that budget. You'll see on the left side, the elementary highest budget without a vote is listed at 41,983. That was the amount in the spring we recommended and the board approved, not as, as the passing of the budget, but we did not entertain a voted levy. And that, that maximum budget could have been 42.3 million with a vote of 411, and, and that wasn't something that, that we supported or the board supported. With the A and B increase of 166 students, so you can see that our budgets increased significantly by 1.5 million, we included into that increase some retiree savings that represents 16.3 certified staff plus some additional classified staff. And then the 1.9 million is allocated a bunch, first for negotiated salary increases along with estimated steps and lane movements, as well as a, one FTE. Additional increases are set below anticipated obligations, below that heading. You'll see the significant increase in our GL insurance. We talked a bit about that. Part of that had to do with some bidding that our insurance company did, but also significantly it had to do with losses countrywide affecting the insurance industry. So it certainly affected us here. A slight increase in our SRO costs based upon an inflationary increase. We've incorporated the online piece for iReady. That was not part of the original budget for the curriculum adoption, so we wanted to include that here in the general fund. Then you have CPR cost training, which wasn't budgeted before, as well as AED costs, replacement, that's replacing our AED units as they need to be replaced. We have a slight bump for discretionary allocation to our K-5 schools. They haven't seen an increase for some time. Custodial increase, this is for a number of our buildings, including, for three buildings, I want to say Jefferson and two others. I apologize, I don't have the schools. Middle school cross-country, that's three cross-country coaches for a test drive on cross-country as a middle school sport. Then 2.5 FTE, this is secretarial help for our larger K-5 schools. 1.5 library for accreditation at Meadow Hill, additional fine arts teacher. Then we've moved the early kindergarten, one early kindergarten teacher in Para from the Title I to the general fund. And then finally, we added some additional funds in the elementary for added support, which would include COVID-related sport. So these, these funds would be rebudgeted next year, but then would be available this year for other, other needs that aren't listed here. We've incorporated in the budget anticipated position savings, and as mentioned before on last week, this is to capture what we see as, as budget in excess of expenditures for, for salaries. And, and this happens occasionally where, where we have both position savings, which you don't want to overestimate that amount because that, those positions still exist, but we are estimating a lot of these additional costs, including the lanes and step movements. So we, we want to be closer to our expenditures, and that's what that's reflecting. There's a smaller inter-local support from the elementary to the high school. Last week it was 334,000 with still a deficit of 107,000 in the high school. That's 441,000. We have a different strategy here for the, for the high school. The work comp credit, we had 100,000 listed under the high school exclusively, but, but that credit should apply among all the employees. So if we take that credit, then it's, what's reflected here is we're taking it on the elementary side as well as the high school side, and we bumped that credit up to 150,000. And you'll see that the budget's balanced under this proposal. And that was all I wanted to go over.
Okay, which trustee? Trustee Decker, if you want to unmute your microphone and ask a question of Pat? Thanks.
Hey, Pat, I see the added support including COVID-related needs on here, and since this is the general fund, I'm not sure where it would be reflected, the additional funding that the district has received from the CARES Act and how that fits in.
So trustee Decker, if you don't mind holding your second question till we're looking at the high school budget, then Pat might even explain it in his comments. Because I think-
Um, yes, that's right.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, thanks, thanks trustee Decker. So the, so the, that line item is, it does reference the support for COVID or COVID-related expenditures, and it, it's not earmarking those expenditures for anything specific. And you are correct that there's CARES Act funds plus coronavirus relief support through the governor's office that we received, additional support. Those funds will be expended through Fund 15, our miscellaneous programs fund. It's an unbudgeted fund, but it's where federal programs and, and grant funds are, are run through. The one thing with the, with the governor's recent funds that were distributed is they have a December 30 expenditure deadline, and, and so it's entirely possible that we'll experience continuation of expenditures for certain items beyond December 30, if that makes sense. So if we, for instance, hire a position that's COVID-related, and it, and the expenditure ends December 30, and we still want that person or that position in place, we would need additional funding to cover those costs for the second half of the school year. Does that make sense?
It does. Does that mean that that added-
It does not. It's not a specific allocation for any specific purpose. I mean, it's something that, that, that we could bring back to the, to the board if we talked about expending it or using it for any different purpose. We just didn't consider earmarking it for any specific expenditure within the elementary budget. And it's not limited to COVID expenditures. It's just the elementary side.
And so we're not able to earmark something like that on the high school side?
So we didn't within the general fund, but if you recall, we talked a bit about the, the existence of the multi-district agreement when we, when we adopted that multi-district agreement. Our effort has been to preserve funds as best we can, 2020 funds, including building up with some year-end funds, the multi-district agreement. And so the multi-district agreement becomes an inter-local fund that we can use for expenditures, elementary or high school, and, and that would be a funding source. We've also preserved some other funds as best we could, because as you know, the year ended in a real strange way, and through the inter-local, or through the multi-district, we've preserved some of the buildings, high school buildings discretionary funds through the multi-district. And, and we've restored some indirect costs in other areas that, that could be available and could be used for added support if necessary.
Does, does that answer your question, trustee Decker? More or less? Okay. Any other trustee questions of Pat?
I don't see any right now. I'm just going to-
Okay, trustee Mercer has a question.
What's the difference between the inter-local fund support and the multi-district inter-local support?
It's, it's the same. It's Fund 82. And so the, the multi-district is sort of a term of art created through this, through the statute where the legislature authorized the multi-district agreements as a, as a vehicle for different districts to, to deposit and share resources. So the, we've typically used the inter-local support in, and described it in that way, but it's the same. It's the same.
Follow-up. So on the inter-local fund support, there's money leaving the elementary budget to go to the high school budget. Why, and then, but on the one at the bottom, there's no money leaving. That's my confusion. There's a 300,000 to the high school, and I know we're not talking about that yet, but the elementary's not paying that 300,000?
That's different.
Well, that's, that's my question. How is, how is the-
Trustee Smith, I think his question is to Pat.
Well, I- Am I- So, so yeah, two different things. The, the, the excess Title I funds are high school Title I funds. And, and I'm happy to talk about those now, but the, the Title I program has an expenditure deadline of September 30th, and we had a, quite a bit of unspent Title I funds. And part of recommendation through OPI was to expend those on our Title I staff in the high school, and that would be at Big Sky and Seeley Swan High School. Those are our two high schools. And so that would be an expenditure of those funds so they're not lost, essentially. The 194 is as described. Those funds will be, as you've described them. So it's essentially a transfer to the multi-district, but it's not a transfer that we make unless we need it. So those funds will, will sit in the elementary budget until, and would only transfer to the extent and if the high school budget wasn't able to cover that through the, the course of the year, which I don't anticipate that we'll need those funds to, to balance. But I want to make sure and present to you a, a close to or balanced budget, which is why we're relying upon those resources.
Any other trustee questions either virtually?
I'm not seeing any hands up here.
Okay, and I don't see any hands up here. So let me get back to my agenda. I apologize. And so the recommendation is that there would be a motion to approve adoption of all 2020-2021 elementary budgeted funds and the amounts to be raised by the tax levies as presented on the attached motion and Resolution 2021-2E. And this is an elementary-only item, so K-12 trustees, and it looks like trustee Lourenson has made that motion. She's indicated yes, and trustee Oldperson has seconded it. So this is the time for any board discussion or comment. Trustee Lourenson?
I, I appreciate the reduction of the amount of elementary money earmarked for the inter-local agreement. And, and I see we're budgeting for this year. I guess my sense is that we better be ready for a great, big budget reduction next year. And now, of course, we don't decide that now, but, you know, this, this COVID thing is running through the whole state. People aren't being able to work and therefore not able to pay taxes. So I guess I'm just, I feel sad. I feel like this is our last good budget for a while.
Any other trustee comments? Oh, trustee Decker?
As parent that we can be over the next few months about how we spend both CARES Act funding and regular funding on the kinds of things that make this a safe return to school and that are really, you know, putting our literal money where our mouth is as we get ready to reopen safely for everybody. I think the more transparency around that that we can provide, the better. And I appreciate how extremely complex our budget is, but I know for me, it's sometimes confusing to see like a $3,000 expenditure on an overview like this and understanding, you know, what it is that, that we should be getting that layer of granularity or detail around. I would love to have more like of a picture of how we're spending money in this really unprecedented time. You know, we, we obviously can't, like, I, I've seen how many pages it takes to get to that level of $3,000 expenditures. It's a lot of pages, and so I'm certainly not asking for that. But particularly as it relates over the next few months to spending COVID funds, funds that were left behind last year, and how we're reallocating those, that kind of stuff is going to go a long way, I think, to restoring trust, and I just want to really make a plug for, for emphasizing that.
Thanks for your comments, trustee Decker. I'm, well, I'm, I don't see all the trustees on my gallery view, so I will leave it to Pat until he knows.
I don't see anybody else asking for a hand.
Okay, then it's time for public comment.
I do not see any hands.
Okay, so we have a seconded motion. All K-12 trustees in favor of the motion to approve adoption of the 2020-2021 elementary budgeted funds and the amounts to be raised by tax levies as presented on the attached motion and Resolution 2021-2E, please indicate by raising your hand. And I can see trustee Decker, but I- And I can see Trustee Decker, but I can't see-
Trustee McDonald has typed in yes in the chat.
And all trustees in the room, if you just raise your hand one more time. I was looking at the screen. So I see that all trustees in the room virtually have indicated a yes vote on the motion, so the motion passes. So we will now move on to two, which is to adopt 2020-2021 high school budgets. And Pat, once again, if you want to walk us through what that proposed budget looks like.
Okay, thank you, Chair Holland. And so page 49 is the motion and the summary of the proposed budgets, along with their levy amounts for the high school, the same nine budgeted funds. The one thing I would mention, I forgot to on the elementary, is the Flex Fund, which you'll see there has a $143,000 budget. Is reflective of a grant that we received, an opportunity grant that was part of House Bill 387, providing career and tech education. And part of that grant was that it would be deposited in the Flex Fund. The elementary portion was smaller. It was $42,000. But we've never, and you've never, and neither have I, seen any activity in the Flex Fund. So this is the first time that we have. I would then jump to page 52, which is a more detailed summary of our levies, change in levies, the change in mills, and the tax impact. And you'll see a levy decrease of $950,000, which is significant. The biggest component there is the $712,000 reduction in debt service. And so we've got a high school bond that's coming off of the obligation, so we're paying that off. We refunded a number of bonds over the last 10 years. And so some of those bonds are being completely paid. And we'll have another one this coming year, FY21, that'll get paid as well, which we'll see a similar reduction, which is really a great thing. The tax estimates with very minimal increase in tax value. The 4.95 reduction in mills translates to a 13.36 reduction in tax cost on a $200,000 home. The overall, the budgets went up for all these nine funds by $183,000. And the smaller increases, the general fund increase of $162,000, which we'll talk about in a second. The transportation fund, $265,000, largely reappropriation of funds from last year. And we're able to reappropriate quite a bit of funds on the transportation or the technology side and adopt a larger budget because we're using CARES Act money to pay for technology, pay for computers that are related to our effort to get Chromebooks in students' hands. The, those were the most remarkable changes. I guess the building reserve, I'll just mention, is reducing a levy of $153,000. And that's a trustee-approved permissive levy. We talked about this a few times. But the overall reduction in that levy supports an increase in the general fund overbase by $152,000. And it's part of a state statute, 20-9-308, that gives flexibility for trustees to increase the overbase levy without a vote by virtue of a reduction in a permissive levy. So that's a good, a flexible option that we have here to help the high school out. If we jump back, then to, sorry, to page 47. On the high school side, you'll see that the highest budget without a vote is listed there at $30,598. And then the overbase levy would be the overbase increase by virtue of the decrease in permissive levies. And not just the building reserve decreasing, but there's no increase in the tuition fund. There's no increase in adult ed or transportation. So that helps support that overbase increase. The proposed adopted budget is $30,751, which for the high school is actually above maximum. And we can do that by adopting a prior-year budget plus increases to the funding components. The reason we're in that spot is that we had A and B in the high school decreased by 30, 38. So we're hoping that'll turn around this upcoming year. Probably not the best year now. The other piece was retiree savings. We had 11.3 certified staff that are part of that savings of 260. And then we have the 422 to work with, which is quite a bit different than on the elementary side. And you'll see as we work through the staffing obligations that that 422 turns into a deficit of 531. And then when we add some of the same obligations on the high school side that we talked about on the elementary side, that the obligation or the deficit goes to 592. And then support for that offset comes in the form of that inter-local support, the multi-district support from the elementary, the work comp credit, and the excess Title I funds, which is a large amount. Part of those funds could not be expended during the year because of COVID. So Title I schools, and in the high school, that's Seeley and Big Sky, weren't able to participate in a number of professional development opportunities that they typically would have, which were budgeted. That didn't happen. And then Title I in the high school, it used to include Hellgate, and Hellgate's no longer there. So that, this is a, we've had a couple of years with excess special ed costs. And this is a good use to avoid losing those resources. So appropriate and approved use by OPI. So that helps our high school budget this year and helps us balance. So there's a proposed balanced budget that's presented. That's all I have.
Thanks. Trustee Decker, I assume you want to ask your question? And if you have another question too, feel free to ask a second one.
Thanks. There are related questions. I think, you know, as long as I have been at this, I always have more questions about the budget. It just takes a long time to really get it. I'm thinking about Title I funding and how that then is being allocated. It's my understanding that the Title I funds are meant to stay with that school as long as those students are there. And I'm wondering how, if it's the case that schools that get Title I funding, then that-
Thanks, Trustee Decker. Yes, so the Title I funds, as you mentioned, are available for schools that qualify based upon free and reduced population of pupils. And both Seeley and Big Sky are school-wide Title I schools, which means that the funds can be used broadly to support students. We've always used Title I funds to support and not supplant the other available funds. And so this use is unique because it will be used to cover staffing costs, but it's also appropriate. We could, as a district, allocate those Title I funds on an annual basis to support these teaching staff. But we've always looked at it as additional support, not replacing what we would otherwise provide with the general fund. Does that help?
And Trustee Decker, do you have a second question? Oh, okay. Thanks. Trustee Lorenzen has a question. And then I don't know with Hatton, if you can tell if anyone else on, okay. See, Lorenzen, go ahead.
Okay, I'm looking at page 52. So we have a budgeted amount and then levied amounts. And for example, in adult education, we're about $50,000 short, no, $500,000 short. So where does the other money to fill out the adult education budget come from? Are we subsidizing that through the general fund? Kind of the same question around the others, particularly technology and transportation.
Yeah, a great question. And what it represents is that reappropriation of budget. So what we do is we adopt a budget that represents not only the levy for that year, but all of the unspent dollars in that fund from the prior year. And so you point out a really good one in the technology fund because we moved quite a bit of expenditures that could be justified as COVID-related Chromebook purchases. And that preserved budget in the tech fund. So even though the difference between the, so if the difference between the levy and the budget, like in the tech fund, is $750,000 or so, that $750,000 difference isn't funds coming from any other fund. It's because those funds are available to reappropriate within the fund itself. So they're available dollars at the end of the year. And that's what usually takes time in getting this to you, is that we have to complete all of the expenditures that relate to FY20 and find out that final number to reappropriate. So that's why there's a variance between those two. Did that-
I couldn't tell, Trustee Operson, did you have a question? Okay, thanks. Any other trustee questions? Okay. So the recommendation is for a motion to approve adoption of all 2020-21 high school budgeted funds and the amounts to be raised by tax levies as presented on the attached motion and Resolution 2021-2S, with the explanation that with trustee approval of all 2020-2021 high school budgeted funds, trustees are authorizing an increase of the high school overbase budget levy of $152,974 by virtue of a reduction of over $153,000 in non-voted tax levies, as has been explained and is contemplated. So is there a motion to do so? Moved by Trustee Vogel. Is there a second? Seconded by Trustee Lorenzen. Any board comments? I don't see any from the trustees participating remotely. Any public comment? I don't see anyone indicating that they're raising their hand. And Hatton is shaking her head in agreement with me that there are no hands raised. So all trustees in favor of the motion to approve adoption of all 2020-2021 high school budgeted funds, as was outlined in the motion, please indicate by raising your hand.
Trustee Decker, Trustee Sturbis, Trustee Wade, and Trustee McDonald have all indicated.
So I see all hands raised or raised virtually, so the motion passes unanimously. We move on to three, which is to approve a six-month lease of a portion of Mount Jumbo School to the Missoula International School. This is an elementary action item this tonight, and I will remember that I can't vote on it. And I do see that there's been a modification made to the nature of the lease. So Pat, if you want to explain the difference between last week's information item to this week's action item.
Yes, thank you, Chair Holland. So the reflecting the concerns that were raised on the 11th regarding leasing space, including space in Mount Jumbo, the four classrooms that are proposed for a lease here would represent sort of the bare minimum needs that the international school would have to, in the form of a leasehold. And the change also to the lease is that the tenancy would be a month-to-month tenancy rather than a six-month lease. So the lease is terminable by either party upon 30 days written notice. So the use, if needed by the district, would, if those four classrooms were needed beyond the other classrooms in the school, then we could terminate on a 30-day notice, which would also apply to the international school. That's it.
Any questions?
Can I just add a couple of-
Pardon?
Can I add a couple of comments?
Dr. Watson?
So I just wanted to add a couple of comments to this particular item. We had an opportunity to speak with a party that was interested in leasing for childcare. And that party has since told me that they were not prepared to lease at this time. And then the other thing I just wanted to point out is that Assistant Superintendent Lodge can't be here this evening, but he has been in contact with our large childcare partners in town regarding childcare options. And I asked him if he had any requests from the larger partners to use Mount Jumbo, and he hasn't had any requests at this time. So I'm not saying that it wouldn't happen, but at this point in time, we don't have any requests for childcare for this building.
Trustee Mercer?
I guess just to continue on to that, can you articulate why we wouldn't want to do what they're doing and put some of our classes there?
It's a good question. So, Trustee Mercer, I don't know if you're asking about childcare options or our actual classes there. I think what you're asking is about the classes, yeah. So under the hybrid model, we have space with half of our students in the building. We also have other support systems in that building, in the school building. We have lunch program. We have nursing staff. We have office staff. It would be difficult for us to replicate that in a different building, not saying that we couldn't do it, but we seem to meet our needs within our current buildings. And when we move to the, when we do move to the every day, every student, we can reassess that spacing need. But again, we would have to take all those factors into consideration before we would relocate, you know, a portion of the students to a different building.
Any other, oh, Trustee Decker has a question?
Thanks. I'm wondering if you could speak for a second to what equipment exists at Mount Jumbo currently. I know, I'm pretty sure that we used bond proceeds to get it hooked up to our Wi-Fi or to our network so that it is, like, it's equipped for data there. And I'm wondering if there's still, like, furniture there from when the kids from Lowell used it a couple of years ago. And the reason why I'm asking the question is because there may not have been requests around childcare yet, but as people understand what remote learning might look like, the concept of remote learning hubs has started to become a more widely discussed concept in the community. And while it may not be of interest for childcare per se, there may be folks who might be interested in it for other purposes, particularly because there really aren't very many other places in East Missoula or something like that. So I'm curious what facilities exist there now that might be usable if someone were interested.
Yeah, so the, there was a portion of the improvements that were, improved the bandwidth at Mount Jumbo. That's where Lowell relocated to. In terms of what's in the school, there's quite a bit of furniture in the school. And I haven't personally looked at it, Trustee Decker, but I understand from discussing with, talking with Burley that that opposite wing is pretty much full of furniture that is ours, tables, chairs, that type of thing. The gym is clear. Those four classrooms and maybe others in the other wing are clear, but I think there's quite a bit of furniture out there.
Thanks.
So just a follow-up clarification. So just a follow-up clarification, when you say half of, or about half the school excluding the gym is full of furniture, it's using to store furniture? It's not set up for classrooms? It's lots of furniture pushed into rooms?
Exactly, yeah, good clarification. It doesn't look like a classroom, right?
Any other, um, questions? Not seeing any. Oh, yes, trustee Decker?
There's no, um, dollar amount listed in our agenda for, for the rent that would be, um, procured for, for renting four classrooms to the international school. Um, what, what kind of lease are we looking at?
Yeah, it's, it's, uh, sorry, that, that, um, that didn't change, and I should have included it. It's still three dollars per square foot for about fifty-five hundred square feet of space. Yes.
So do you, do you have a dollar amount, generally speaking?
Like about fifteen thousand dollars a month or something?
No, that's a year, that's a year.
That's a year, yes.
That's a year.
Fifteen thousand dollars.
But there, but right now it would be month to month.
So you would take sixteen five and divide by twelve to get to the, approximate monthly cost would be thirteen seventy-five, plus they would cover, uh, utilities and, so that would be the, the rental would be thirteen seventy-five.
Any other trustee questions? Okay, not seeing any. Then, um, the recommendation is for a motion, um, from an elementary trustee to approve the month-to-month lease of four classrooms at Mount Jumbo School to Missoula International School with the understanding that the terms that were discussed last week when it was an information-only item would be maintained. It would just be that the square footage has been drastically reduced. And also the term of the lease is month-to-month now instead of six months with, um, opportunity for to, being terminated by either party upon thirty days' notice. So does everyone understand what the terms are now? I see nods. And I see Grace raising your hand. So Grace, is that a nod or do you want to make a motion or?
I'd like to make a motion that we revisit this lease request in one month's time and at that time consider beginning a month-to-month lease on the property under the terms in this, the terms in our agenda.
Is there a second to that motion? Seconded by trustee Lorenzen. Is there any board discussion? Trustee Decker, then trustee Lorenzen, so I think trustee.
Thanks. Um, I, I fully appreciate that the Missoula International School is trying to do what they can to, um, you know, to, to do things that are going to keep their kids safe while they're in the middle of renovation and all of that. Um, one of the things that we're at a premium about right now is time. And time to actually allow solutions to be created is something that we, um, that we can give while still, um, considering this in a month. We only just heard about this possibility a week ago. And so I really feel like we need to have a little more time to let this sort of percolate. Um, I think the complexities of renting the space to any program right now before we know what other uses there might be for the building are actually pretty significant. It may be that it's just four classrooms, but there's a playground to consider, there are entrances and exits, there are bathrooms, there's handwashing facilities, all of the considerations that we would have in any space if we were to consider other uses to support MCPS children would be complicated by renting at this time to an outside entity in this way, in my opinion.
And then trustee Lorenzen?
Uh, I absolutely agree with trustee Decker. I would have been stronger and just said, let's just drop this. The Mount Jumbo School is inside the Rattlesnake District, and Rattlesnake is one of our most crowded elementaries. It's inside the Washington District. Washington's our most crowded middle school. Um, it's very close to Paxson, Paxson's crowded. And our teachers are concerned that we don't have our plans solidified. And I agree with them. We need this space available, uh, as we move forward and as we, perhaps like, if we go back to remote learning, or anything could happen. We couldn't have imagined, two months ago, we'd be where we are right now, and we can't commit away some of our space. And I agree that if we had another entity in there, we've just increased our number of contacts for the kids. Our whole purpose of moving the kids to these extra classrooms would be to reduce their number of contacts, as we heard from the teachers. And yet there would be this whole separate group of people using the bathrooms, the playground, the gym, et cetera, well, maybe not the gym. But, um, I just think we need this now. We need all the flexibility we can get. And in a district with, I don't know, five or six hundred classrooms, it's not unreasonable to have fifteen or twenty extra classrooms in case we need them. So I, I, I mean, I understand trustee Decker voted or proposed that we delay a, a month. And that's certainly a, a better idea because we've heard all night that we are rushing. So let's not rush into committing away this space that we could very well need.
Thanks. Any other trustee comments? Trustee Mercer?
I guess I'm struggling with this and trying to think, other than being a good neighbor, the money doesn't seem meaningful. So why would we do it other than be a good neighbor? And so I guess I'm going to support the motion unless there's a reason that would benefit us to do this. It just seems like we were doing it because we weren't using it. So.
Any other trustee comments? Any seen, none? Any, um, public comment? And Hatton indicated she's not seen any. So it's a K-12, um, elementary item. So all trustees in favor of the motion to, I guess the correct word would be to table this matter for one month and bring it up at the next, right, the second board meeting in September, most likely. That would give us a little less than thirty days, but that would be about one month. Would that be okay? Or do you want a one month, so it'd be October before we revisit it?
You're, I'm sorry, are you, Chair Holland, are you asking me to be more specific about the motion?
Right, just because you said thirty days, that would mean we'd have a special board meeting thirty days from now in order to.
I, okay, I appreciate that, thank you. Um, I would recommend that, and, uh, I'll just make sure that, that this might be a friendly amendment to my own motion, is that the way this works?
That is, yes.
That we would table this until our first October board meeting.
Okay.
I actually really like that because that puts us closer to when we had imagined that we would be in every child every day, and we'll have a lot more information by then.
Okay. And unless any trustee who, um, the second, we don't need to check with the second, but I believe that's a friendly motion, so that's the motion that's now on the table, that now on the table, which is to table this agenda item until it be reconsidered at the first board meeting in October. I don't have the date, but we all understand that's the second Tuesday of the month. So with that friendly amendment, all trustees in favor of the motion, please indicate by raising your hand, and this is elementary only.
Trustee Decker and trustee McDonald, both yes.
So it is unanimous as to all trustees present that are Kate, pardon? Oh, s, I, oh, okay.
I oppose.
Okay, so having clarified that I didn't look around the room carefully enough, trustees Decker, trustee McDonald, trustee Lorenzen, trustee Smith, trustee Olperson, trustee Mercer have voted in favor of the motion, and trustee Agarres has voted against the motion, so the motion carries. Excuse me about my voice. And thank you for clarifying that. Then we move on to two items that are really just more technical in nature than anything. We adopted two board policies that are found in our nineteen-hundred section that were specific to COVID. And during agenda setting, Pat brought forward the fact that in, when we adopted the board policy nineteen oh one and nineteen oh six, we limited it to, um, fiscal year twenty. The pandemic has not yet gone away, we're moving into fiscal year twenty twenty-one. And so I think the suggestion is to strike any reference to any fiscal year. Is that correct? So Pat, if you want to just walk us through that.
Sure, thank you. The, uh, that's exactly right. The, uh, the, these emergency policies are supposed to run concurrent with the declaration, and so the reference to the pre, the FY twenty is, uh, is not a good reference within these policies. So wherever it references that, it was either stricken or stricken with language indicating the school year or the fiscal year was, was added to make it, um, applicable to any year that the emergency would be declared related to COVID, including this year.
Any questions for Pat or me? Seeing none, then we'll take it as one at a time. The first one is to approve the revision of board policy nineteen oh one, use of transportation funds during periods of school closure. It's found on page fifty-three with the appropriate strikeouts and language changes. Is there a motion to do so? Moved by trustee, um, Lorenzen, and seconded by trustee Olperson. Is there any board discussion? I don't see any hands up. Any public comment?
Nope.
Nope, thanks. Then all trustees in favor of approving the revised board policy nineteen oh one, please indicate by raising your hand. And if you can check on trustee Sturbis, Wake.
Trustee Decker, trustee McDonald, trustee Wake, and trustee Sturbis, all vote yes.
So it's, um, the motion passes unanimously. Then we move on to nineteen oh six, student instruction and services. This is the same, um, revisions that we just approved in nineteen oh one, is that correct, Pat?
Exactly, yeah.
Any questions? So is there a motion to approve the revised board policy nineteen oh six, um, as it is reflected on page fifty-five of the agenda, or attached to the agenda? Moved by trustee Lorenzen, is there a second? Seconded by trustee Olperson, is there any board discussion? I'll just say, thanks, Pat, for catching that. It's nice when our board policies can't be misinterpreted in, in any way. So thank you for catching that. And we have not voted yet? I didn't think so, I was just, sorry. And so, um, did I ask for a public comment?
I believe so.
Okay, so any public comment on this second board policy? Then now, all trustees in favor of the motion to approve the amended board policy nineteen oh six, please indicate by raising your hand.
Trustee Sturbis and trustee Wake and trustee Decker and trustee McDonald.
Yes, so it has been approved unanimously. So now we move on to approving the amended Sealy-Swan High School calendar for twenty twenty dash twenty twenty-one. And Dr. Watson had, um, alerted us to make, to the fact that he'd be bringing this change forward last week when I referenced that some of the policies we had applied to urban schools might not apply to Sealy-Swan, but this is a modification to their schedule. So, Dr. Watson?
Uh, thank you, Chair Holland. This modification is due to construction, and I would defer to Pat. I don't exactly remember what the issue of construction was, but I know there were delays in the construction, um, timeline due to COVID. And what happened is, uh, the, the principal at Sealy-Swan let me know that their, um, main hallways and the area around the main office is fairly ripped up. They, they were hoping to have it done before the start of school. Uh, they were scheduled to start, um, on the twenty-sixth or the twenty-fourth. I can't remember what the previous calendar was, we can look it up, but they were scheduled to start next week. And, um, it would, the construction timeline, timeline would have been cutting it too close. So the request was made by the principal to start on September first, um, and then make up the days by attending school on Fridays in the month of September. So you may recall that Sealy-Swan is on a four-day-week calendar. They attend Monday through Thursday, and they have Fridays as a student support day. But, uh, in order to make up the days they would be missing in August, they would attend school on Fridays in the month of September. And I support the recommendation as defined by the, the principal at Sealy.
Are there any, excuse me, questions of Dr. Watson or Pat on behalf of Burley? Or I, I do notice one thing, there's, if you look at normal school days under the calendar on page fifty-nine, it's September, September, step-tember, sep-tember. And so maybe when it's printed in its final form, we'll make it uniformly September.
Thank you.
So, just, just a correction to the spelling of the month of September. So not seeing any more board questions. The recommendation is to approve the amended Sealy-Swan High School twenty twenty dash twenty twenty-one school year calendar that's found on page fifty-nine. Is there such a motion? Moved by trustee Vogel, is there a second? Seconded by trustee Lorenzen. Is there board discussion or board comment? Seeing none. Any public comment?
There does not appear to be any.
So with no public comment, we'll move on to voting. Um, all trustees in favor of approving the amended Sealy-Swan High School twenty twenty dash twenty twenty school calendar with the corrections to the spelling of the word September, please indicate by raising your hand.
Trustee McDonald, trustee Wake, trustee Sturbis, and trustee Decker, all vote yes.
So including those persons attending in person, it passes unanimously. And then to approve cooperative sponsorship agreement between Big Sky High School and Florence Carlton High School, um, Dr. Watson, I know that we've seen these cooperative agreements in the past concerning, um, smaller, smaller districts who want to partner usually for sports-related reasons.
Uh, yes, and, uh, my understanding is this is a cooperative that's been in, in place for quite a while. And, um, I'd asked if, uh, the activities director, Sabrina Bede, could be on the call, but I don't know if she's on the call tonight. Is she on the call in case trustees have any questions about the cooperative?
I am, so.
Oh, thank you.
I am, I am, everyone.
Thank you, Sabrina. So the cooperative is between Big Sky and Florence Carlton. It's specific to cross-country. And as required by the Montana High School Association, it does take board action before the High School Association will consider the cooperative. So Sabrina, would you add anything to those comments?
We all visit our students' school and follow all protocol and policy. It's really a good deal for both schools, and, uh, we offer the same with swimming. And of course, you've already approved the swimming, uh, request for co-op this year as well.
Thanks. Any questions for Dr. Watson or Ms. Bede? Seeing none. Then is there a motion to approve the cooperative sponsorship agreement application with Florence Carlton High School for cross-country? Moved by trustee Lorenzen, is there a second? Seconded by trustee Agarres. Is there any board discussion? I'm not seeing any online, but I.
There's just a yes, I believe, from trustee McDonald.
Oh, okay. So not seeing any comment, is there any public comment?
No, there is not.
Okay, thanks. So all trustees in favor of the motion to approve the cooperative sponsorship agreement application with Florence Carlton High School and Big Sky High School, please indicate by raising your hand.
Trustee McDonald, trustee Wake, trustee Sturbis, and trustee Decker, all vote yes.
Thanks, so that is unanimous as to all trustees present. And as I indicated at the beginning of the meeting, um, although not legally obligated to do so, we, at our board meetings, take public comment on non-agenda items at both the beginning and the end of the meeting. So we're at item number seven, public comment on non-agenda items. And I would ask that the same, um, considerations be given for public comment at this time that were given for the public comment at the beginning of the meeting. Okay, Ms. McDonald, if you can make your public comment?
Thank you, um, my name's Kelly McDonald, M-C-D-O-N-A-L-D.
Thank you, my name's Kelly McDonald, M-C-D-O-N-A-L-D, and I wanted to add that in the hybrid plan, the phase one return to school, the plan for specials, the special teachers who come in, the PE, music, art, and library, I don't feel that those are respite teachers for the regular classroom teachers. I know that you're planning for them to come in and and into the classrooms and do something different than they have before, but I don't consider that to be a respite. I I consider those the actual teachers, actual important subjects that children really value. So thank you.
Thank you for your public comment. Any other public comment? Not seeing any other public comments, so this meeting is now adjourned. Thank you all who either participated or participated virtually in the meeting. Thanks.